Selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. So, our first order of business is to reorganize the board.
I move to -- go ahead.
I move that Don Andrews be the chairman of the board during the year 2017.
Coming year.
Coming year.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I move that Walter Pickford be vice chairman for the coming year.
I second that.
No, wait a minute, is that same as clerk?
No.
Oh, do we have vice chairman?
Only if the clerk isn't here.
If the chairman isn't here, you're the chair.
Okay.
And if the clerk isn't here, you're the clerk. You're kind of a swing position.
That's right.
Oh, I hear you can take a minute.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. And I move that Judy Boomen be clerk for the coming year.
Second.
He was pretty fast on that.
He was pretty quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, changing of the cards.
Musical chair.
You're supposed to take your chair.
I'm supposed to take my chair? All right.
And your pen.
Okay.
All right, I'm rid of those papers.
All right then. The second item of business is the approval of the fiscal year 15 open meeting calendar for the selectmen. Everybody has a copy of it.
Well, that's just the calendar.
This is just the appointment calendar.
But actually in there is a calendar that needs to be signed.
Oh, sorry.
So, we have what?
There we go. And...
That just picks up all the dates you guys come on it all through the summer.
Right, exactly.
And then goes back to regular home schedule.
Yep. So, we're meeting the 14th and 28th of July, the 11th and 25th of August, and then on the 8th of September, we will begin meeting every Monday save for holidays again. I would take a motion to approve this calendar of meetings.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve that calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you are. How you doing? Too bad.
Hello.
Judy, congratulations.
Thank you. It's like I never left.
Yeah. All right.
There was a refund among the things signed, fiscal year 14 motor vehicle refund. It's with all the warrants. No, it's not in order there.
Oh, Walter's got it over there?
Yeah. I believe you've all signed it at this point.
So, do we have to do anything about it?
You need to.
We need to vote.
Technically, vote to approve it.
Oh.
We need an amount.
Where is it?
Look on the top of that package, the one with the elastic bands on it. Is it in that one? Kind of looks like it could be. Yeah.
Well, no. Doesn't it say motor vehicle?
Isn't it?
Nope. That's the expense.
Three eighty-seven twenty.
All right. Okay. I would entertain a motion for motor vehicle fiscal year 14 refunds in the amount of three eighty-seven twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
These guys are your own person. We have requests for a reserve fund transfer. This is a reserve fund transfer to pay for wages, part-time wages for the administrative secretary for the selectmen for the balance of fiscal year 14. And the reason for this is that the former selectman's secretary retired in June, triggered vacation, buyback and expenses during which the former selectman's administrator helped with transition. So, now we are short of funds to pay through the end of the fiscal year. Motion to request.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's kind of five thousand dollar request.
Five thousand dollar.
So, I sent an email out today to the finance committee asking them to send an email to June saying that they would transfer the money at their May 28th meeting because otherwise Mary will not get paid. I don't know if anybody sent anything to her.
Not yet.
No? Okay.
We have town.
Report. There's also a reserve fund transfer for the town report.
I think he was looking for for the proceedings from the town election.
It may have inadvertently slipped into it. It has its own, I think it's green Tom on your right hand on the table.
Oh, okay.
And that was the other thing that you were looking for that was before it.
All right. We have the proceedings at the annual town election, May 12th. Everybody's seen those. And we have a request for reserve fund transfer for town report expenses. The amount requested is four hundred and nineteen thousand eighty-three dollars, and the reason for that was that the printing and postage were more than were budgeted at the last year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a vote to appoint Madeline McTague to the historical commission with a term ending May 30th, 2016. This is to replace him, Ewing, who passed away a few weeks ago. Motion on the?
So moved.
You know, I do favor Madeline, but I want to talk about the historical commission for a moment.
Sure.
You know, given the things that need to be done and haven't been done, i.e. Bullet House, destruction of the Hearst House, no historic district, and a number of other things that not only haven't been accomplished, but the, it'd actually been a discouragement and obstructionism coming out of the commission that other volunteers would have done it and got it all done. For example, you know, the Bullet House would have been all repaired by now. Same with the Hearst House. In fact, I sat on the other side of the table here a couple of years ago and offered you a plan, it would have been all fixed up, been destroyed, fell apart. I think the, I really have a problem with the way the collection is managed. It isn't growing enough. I know people that would contribute to it that just won't. So, I think that we really need to talk about this a little more in the near future, maybe before the next amendment, and maybe even have the commission in since we appoint them and it's our responsibility, the buck stock's here, and have a discussion about these things and see what we can do about it because I'm very disappointed.
I'm not opposed to having them in and having them to discuss it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. I will second Madeline's nomination because she's very good and I think she'll do a good job.
All right then, any other discussion?
Nope.
I'll take a vote on the issue then. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, you're the clerk now.
I like how she left it just clerk.
I didn't know.
So, Mary, would you just put that on business? Do we have the historical commission in sometime, maybe in the next month?
I'll ask them, yep.
Yeah, not too distant future to talk about a number of things.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, it's seven fifteen. And we have the electrical plumbing and gas inspectors, and one of the purposes is to talk about the...
Clerk.
The clerk? I think that's the primary purpose, right?
No.
Sorry, I've been briefed on the purpose. I think they asked for the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Well, then, then...
One thing we wanted to talk about was this sheet that was developed regarding inspections, I guess, yes. Each one of us was given these sheets to be filled out, and our first question is why? Like to get an answer to why. In looking at this sheet, if you take a look at what already gets submitted to the town, everything that's on my submittal, which goes into the town for my mileage, is the same thing, mileage, date, time, not time, but a purpose, and then the overall miles. The only difference is the time. So, I'm just curious why now there's another format involved with the inspectors, just us three first of all. Second of all, why it was done without any discussion? And lastly, if we're going to have to do it, why doesn't anybody else have to do it that has to go out in the name of the town, the fire department, for instance? So, that's why we're here, but really want to know why this came up.
Okay.
Well, Larry, it was, I kind of support the idea. I'm one year on the board, but I think that, I think the board needs to monitor things a little more closely. Things are changing rapidly. All of your jobs are vastly increasing. It's standard practice. I mean, frankly, as I said, due diligence is our responsibility, and we should look after this. We don't want to impose an onerous tax on, what I want to say, task on you, but we do think that, I don't see it that onerous myself, just to come in and what's going on and what project you're working on, and I feel we should review it and know what's going on.
Well, what do you expect to get out of this?
I think simply management responsibility, Al. I mean, it's our responsibility to know what's going on in detail or if nothing else, just to be informed of what's going on. It's not, it's not to penalize anybody, it's not a thing of distrust. It's, you know, it's an idea that we've been talking about, and we just think it's a good idea, and I'm interested in why you would be so opposed to it.
Well, because I don't think you, you're going to want us to keep track of when we go to schooling and all that? All the time we're on the phone discussing stuff with the engineers and architect? All the, plus, like, we don't get paid mileage for our vehicles. Other departments do. Other departments have town phones that they use. We have to use our own. We pay for our own. Now, all of a sudden, you want to put more stuff on it.
Do you pay for your own phone and everything, Henry?
Yes.
Use your own vehicle?
Yeah.
Do you get mileage?
No.
How about you, Larry?
I get mileage, yeah. That's what that mileage sheet is, yeah.
Okay. But, I mean, if you want to stop paying for the extra time, that's fine. But, I mean, all of a sudden, now you want us to do a lot more work. I mean, like, last week, we were three hours with a construction company just going over what we've got to do. Now, who's going to pay us for that? If we're going to fill out time cards, somebody's going to stop paying us on do that stuff. Like what Capella's, I've been on the phone with the engineers for over six hours, all over stuff with those people.
I think that's important, Rick, and Al. I just don't see it as a...
Well, then, it's fine, but you're going to have to compensate us for it, too.
So, you're telling us if you don't do a timesheet, you'll do all this extra work and not be compensated?
Well, you know, I mean, we're going to have to do more compensation because it takes more time, you know? It's not just a matter of boom, boom, we're doing that.
Yeah. Well, that's interesting input.
Well, we spend more time on the phone than we do actually on the job site normally, you know, coming in to get, we come in to get the permits, you know, and that all takes more time than actually doing an inspection, so. I think the question is what do you want to gain from looking at the inspection? Because if I'm on a job for 10 minutes to do an inspection, I've probably already spent a half an hour to an hour on that job already. So, would you then say, okay, that's 10 minutes, it was a hundred dollars, so you've got ten dollars a minute for your time? I mean, is that where we're going with this?
No, it's not. No, it certainly wasn't where I was going. I mean, and I have to say, I was focusing more on what I know about Larry's because I know more about Larry's job. And Larry had raised questions about increasing hours and all of that. So, I was in favor of it, and again, because I know more about Larry and, you know, Larry's salary, I was really focusing on it in that context, and I have to say, less, new lesson, I appreciate hearing what you guys have to say about it. I liked the idea because we'd just recently been kicking around whether we needed to expand hours, you know, we, we have, in the budget, we have, you know, clerical help for the inspectors, you know, at this time. So, I guess we, no, we're, you know, we're not looking to, I don't think we're looking for records down to the last, you know, 15 minutes, so I was just, you know, just to get a sense for how much time you're spending, how much administrative support you need, you know, that, that was certainly my figure.
I've been attempting to do this. I don't have anything to do it on as far as a computer. We don't carry laptops with us on this job, right? And Mary would like to see it in the, that format of that form, all electronically. Well, that's not going to work because we don't have the stuff to do that with. So, I've got a, been writing it down on shards of paper every time I come and go to a job. Now, if I gave that to Hersch, she'd probably throw it at me with all the shards of paper.
Well, I think it's for, I mean, to give it to, I mean, to an admin.
You then have all that time to put it into the format that you want, which I'm not a computer whiz.
Plus, we know our computer doesn't work anyway, so, I mean...
Your computer doesn't work?
No, it hasn't worked for three years.
But even still, we wouldn't sit there and...
No, we're not going to come down.
If you went to a job and did a 10-minute inspection and then come back here, you know, you're driving 10 minutes to get here and go in and log in and look, you know, you're going to have a half an hour on the job instead of 10 minutes. And we, I know I jumped from, when I went up to Highland Commons, for instance, this morning, I stopped and did a trench inspection at the service for Michaels. I drove around to the backside, caught up with Amarillo, and asked them what they were doing as far as electrical because they haven't taken any permits on electrical yet, but I see an excavator there, and sure enough, they are working on the permit to do the light pole that they worked on this morning that I did inspect. From there, I went back around and met with the jack at the other site, the general for the other site, to find out when they were going to be starting the projects there and where the town line is, because I haven't dropped this one on Larry yet, but we issued a occupancy permit for TJ Maxx. I got a call from the Hudson inspection department over the weekend, and he said, hey, did you do our inspections in Berlin? We didn't get any permits or any inspection fees on the 10 feet of TJ Maxx they own. So, now they're looking for...
10 feet?
Yeah, what is it?
They actually, they were a part of this right from the very beginning. When we had that building built, they did their individual inspections on that little bump out which goes into Price Market Basket, excuse me, which is probably, what, 30 feet deep by 100 feet long, little bump out, and in that area, that's where the manager's offices, the assistant managers, the cash area. And when I talked to the general contractor, he'd been in communication with Hudson regarding the file inspection, and the Hudson assistant inspector called me regarding an issue with the stairs on his side, but he's not sure if the stairs are half Berlin or half Hudson. So, he said, I'll just leave it with you. And I said, why don't you consider, we have 99% of the store to begin with. So, I don't know whether there's an issue there or not, but...
Well, like I say, what my point was is I went to see the general contractor on the other store across the wall that looked to be split as well, to try to, you know, get around this problem before it starts, because now they're going to have to do some paperwork on the store that's all you got the occupancy as far as the electricals back there from Hudson's.
Yeah, maybe, they probably do.
I mean, it's not, I don't think it's going to turn into a major project.
Can we stick with the form here and get that on one?
Yeah, yeah. So, what I'm getting at is, you know, that would be writing down five minutes here, and I traveled from there to there, so I write down another three minutes, and it just gets to be a pain in the butt. If you don't just trust the fact that we go out and we work, it makes it difficult to try to maintain that little formula out there.
Well, I don't think anybody was motivated by the fact that we don't trust any of the inspectors, you know? It's more or less getting a handle on it, see what trends we're going in with this building coming on and everything.
All in all, can we then at least eliminate the format because, because we don't have computers? First of all, I can't write that small to literally permit number here, site arrival, date and time, site departure, date, time, description of the work performed. That's all going to be done in seven inches by a quarter of an inch, or it goes down here and goes down here, whereas since the information's already on the other sheet, it's redundant first of all. I don't mind the times, to be honest with you, if you want to know the times, because I've been doing the same thing as him. I started putting, excuse me, in my mileage book. When I sat in the car, put a little L, I'm leaving at 10:05, I drive to the other side of town, it's 10:08, I get out of the car, I do my inspection, whatever time it is when I get back to my car, I write it down again next to the mileage so I can keep track, because I wasn't really sure how this was all going to wash out. If that's what you want, I'll put it right on my mileage sheet instead of doing it twice.
You guys...
Can I just make a record, a suggestion?
Sure.
Since Larry is the only one who does a mileage sheet, his form could be changed accordingly. They, each, all of them have their own version of the form, but they were identical to this point, but since Larry's mileage tracks up pretty closely, it still doesn't capture what you're doing in office, right?
Oh, no. Well, this is, this is inspections here.
I know, but this isn't just, I thought that this wasn't just a request for inspections, it was what was being done in general.
Inside the office as well?
Time chunks. Well, you're here for four hours a day. I thought that's what the board was asking for.
Do you want to break it up that way? In other words, one of the things that I could do is say, okay, I'm only going to inspect for the first hour that I get into town, and then I'll do the inspections. Like tomorrow, I have four inspections when I drive into town. One of them is at Highland Commons. It could take an hour.
Yep.
Well, that automatically puts me behind on the one hour that I'm sitting on.
Again, we're not, we're not talking about enforcing a particular schedule or anything. And as I say, I had more of a detailed expectation with you on this because of the fact we've kicked around two things. One, you know, the issue of increasing hours.
Sure.
And two, the necessity of getting administrative help, and you have opposite, you're the zoning officer. I actually thought it would be helpful to see, and again, I'm not talking about, you know, down to every 15 minutes or, you know, but to get a sense of over, you know, period of time, how much is spent, you know, supporting litigation, how much is spent in zoning enforcement, how much is spent, you know, preparing for inspections and, you know, reviewing plans for the big development? Because then if we look at that kind of data, we, we can say, all right, you know, two, three years out, the expectation, you know, is the job will be more, will be less, what, you know, that, that's really what I had in mind. And, and definitely, you know, not punching the clock, you know, at a level of detail that would help us to, you know, to understand that. So, for me, if I got something that said, you know, I was in here for 20 hours, I spent two and a half hours of that time, you know, reviewing plans for Highland Common. I spent an hour and a half reviewing plans for the hotel at River Bridge. I spent three hours pulling records for the Maplewood, I mean, seriously, just, you know, I'm not talking about every time you get on the phone, marking it down or anything like that, but just so, you know, so, so we got a sense at that level, you know, not, again, not details, not like punching the clock, not like charging it through, because we're not charging it through to anybody, you know, we're just...
I think, you know...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think, you know, what you guys do is just a big black hole to us.
Right.
You know? I know you're going to inspect it, but I don't know what else you do.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I think it's to your benefit to say. I was on the phone for five hours this week talking to...
You know, putting down blocks of stuff like you're saying.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you have me do this instead of having them do it? Because they're done by the permit. Who cares if it takes them an hour? It really doesn't matter because they get the same pay whether it takes them an hour or 15 minutes.
Well, I don't think it's about the pay. I think it's about, like we were saying, you know, what do you do?
But they, yeah, but they're doing inspections, that's how they get paid.
But they also talk on, I mean, they were just saying, they talk on the phone to people.
But they're not getting really paid for that. They're only getting paid for their inspections.
Well, I mean, I kind of view that the pay they get includes that as part of the inspection, right? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, they could, I suppose so, but how is that going to affect, even if you had that information? I suppose you could say, well, it took them a grand total of 25 hours to inspect Michaels, let's say. But that would be done in increments and chunks. For them, it would be extremely difficult. For me, it's not that hard to do. It really isn't.
Well, you know, I mean, you know, Henry, you were talking about your situation at Highland Commons there. I mean, I don't see you driving two minutes here and talking, it'd be X number of time at Highland Commons, you know, the district thing, that's all.
Well, where that form is this year...
Yeah, but over a period of time, that adds up to a lot of time.
And that's what we, yeah.
Agreed.
Right. I mean, you gotta, you gotta list all the time.
Why don't we do...
You gotta do it all or you don't do it at all.
Right, right, exactly.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we develop a format that makes it easier to give them the information?
And we're talking, you know, again, major, the major chunks.
Yes, yes.
Again, this is not like we're trying to build through to anybody or anything like that. Yeah, that's okay with me. If you guys want to, want to put together a format and suggest to us, I think that's, that's a great idea.
That'd be fantastic, because this thing looked like it was, you gotta write down the minute you get there and the minute you leave. It's like, I don't know about you, but I do half of my stuff.
No, we've got, we've got a chip, we've got a chip.
And planted.
Yeah, we got a chip implanted in you, Henry. We know where you are all the time.
I don't quite so well while I'm driving. Just out of curiosity, this one, how many, is things picking up down the solar farm you're spending any time down there?
Oh, yeah, I'm down there every day. Yeah, yeah. They've almost finished the underground.
Really?
Yeah, they're going, they're going there.
It won't take them that long.
I gotta go in.
They're going fast. They got, the upper racks are all built.
Yeah.
They expect to get solar panels in this week.
Yeah.
And start installing them. So, they're making good progress.
Yeah.
So, you're inspecting kind of the trenches and stuff at this point?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're all the way from the street up onto the top of the hill.
Gee, they gotta stop in there.
Yeah. Well, you won't see much because it's all backfilled and graded.
Already, huh?
They're going to town. I mean, you will see stuff, but a lot of it, you'll see pipe sticks out of the ground, but they've gone from the street all the way to the furthest section.
Really?
But it's a good idea to go and look. I remember the first time I saw one, I was like, it's huge. It really is huge. Huge opening, and there's all kinds of wiring, all kinds of panels. It's just amazing.
They know what they're doing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
The clerk.
Yes. We also, where's the, where was the description of...
It's actually deeper if you look at the agenda. It's almost by before the salinas, backed up little things.
Here, perfectly.
All right.
I just gave that to Larry this afternoon. I just sent it to the board this afternoon.
Did you send it to these two?
I didn't, because I actually gave it to Larry, but I didn't give it to any of the land use boards either. I wanted you to look at it first, or maybe I should just send everybody some feedback?
Yeah, because we, so this is, we're trying to get a description for your clerk, and we have a preliminary one, so if you can read it and just email back comments, things that you think they need to do, that's going to be helpful to you.
So, we'll get, yeah, we'll get your copies.
Could I get a, there was six or seven of them I gave to you, maybe even eight of them, that I had read a couple of months ago. I'd love to get, there's two of them in there that were really, really good as far as I saw.
Okay.
If I can get them, you'll, you'll know they are the ones because they're almost written by the exact same town twice, and they got highlighted everywhere. Everywhere on it, I highlighted, I was like, oh, yeah, this is really good.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I guess you, this here, this is fairly thorough, too. One thing that surprised me is on the meeting that we had regarding this, the administrative assistant on April 24th, all the different boards put in what they want... the administrative assistant on April twenty-fourth, all the different boards put in what they wanted, the hours that they wanted. My main concern is, I said ten hours, that's basically the hours that I would be able to work with her in the office. When I read through this, it says that she's gonna be available to the building electrical, plumbing and gas, planning boards, zoning board of appeals, conservation boards as well. How is that gonna be set up?
Well, first of all, the conservation commission won't use her.
Really? Why not?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I don't know that ZBA, I mean, I think the fact that she's in the office and somebody can come in and say,
Oh, okay.
You know, twenty-three Linden Street, can you show me blah blah? She can hopefully, sometime in the future, she'll be able to pull out a packet and say, here's the information, I can make you a copy.
Do you know how many total hours that you finally landed at?
I think it was sixteen, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was, well, I have eighteen here, but then somebody else backed up, I think the Board of Health backed up,
They have their own person, yeah.
I think we said sixteen.
I think we said sixteen.
Sixteen hours, okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, I would anticipate that some of the others, I mean, if Con, you know, it's conceivable Con, Con could use it, but if they had, you know, a, a big filing or, you know, got behind or had a filing project or something like that, but I don't think they'll be, they're gonna be a regular daily user.
I think you three are gonna be.
Yeah, you're gonna be the big.
You know, eighty percent, ninety percent.
Because you'll have somebody who's answering the phone, taking messages.
Can we, can I be involved in the actual interview with the people that you bring in?
Sure.
That would be great, it really would.
I mean, any one of you, if you're.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, to end this, if we're, if we're all set, we'll come up with a different format, make it easier, develop the information, and now that I understand exactly what you want, we'll be able to give you the information we need.
And we're really just looking to get like a profile sort of, topography of the job.
Okay.
We get around to applicants, we get the three of those down now, that's free.
Sure.
Well, I don't think you can.
You don't think you can?
Well, there's one that's related to one of the inspectors.
Do we have applicants?
No, but I've heard strong interest of.
I think what we, what we do normally is get a committee together.
A committee that then advises us, and so, you know, we've got some inspector, or somebody can recuse themselves.
In the other towns, I mean, we just put out the advertisement, we set up the interviews and go through them and pick the best one out.
Yeah.
That's the best you can do.
Yep. That's the plan, pick the best one, and see if we do it.
Yeah, first we have to get a good job description.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for your time.
Well, I was also gonna say, that clerk is probably gonna have to have computer skills.
Yeah.
For the, for the G O T M S.
And everything else that a clerk would have to do.
So, that needs to be.
Okay.
All right. Your seven thirty's here.
Did you see the email that I sent you, I did this afternoon?
No.
From Margaret.
Thank you.
Did you see what it sold for?
Yes.
What did it sell for?
One thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, put it on for five hundred. The two thousand and five Ford Crown V.
As was pointed out, they don't make the car anymore, so just as a parts vehicle for somebody. Taxi cab industry will just build more vehicles with the parts for them.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
They'll part it out. In fact, I had one phone call, and that was going into the condition, I said about the rusting fenders, he said, oh, that's typical, so we knew the product.
Great. Let me ask for a, you know, I'm sorry, I just.
May I introduce myself, John?
Naton Higopian, eight years firefighter, paramedic.
Tom what?
Naton Higopian.
Nogopian?
No, Higopian.
Yeah.
Nate.
Nate?
Naton Nathan, yeah.
Got it.
Freddie Gilchrist, secretary of the fire company.
James Concannon, South Street, seventy-ninth South Street, I mean, A, but the other end.
Should come down and visit once in a while.
You know the last gentleman I would guess.
Yeah.
No, he hasn't.
He does make you. Not admitting it.
There was a quick update from VFIS this afternoon, that Margaret called me back.
Oh, okay, well, just as a preface, we, Mary and I have been batting back and forth this issue with the insurance and the muster and whatnot, and we just concluded the best bet was to try and succinctly get it done by having a quick meeting with you guys. The, the muster league had requested that, or required that the teams come up with proof of insurance. This is the first time they've done it for the teams.
This is the secretary.
Sexiness had done it, okay.
It was implemented.
Last year they didn't run because of issues relative to a particular event that the group didn't feel they wanted to participate in the way it was designed, in terms of safety goes. That has precipitated this fury of flurry of emails going back and forth on the insurance end of things. And so, what we found was that, first of all, the muster truck is owned by the town. It is on the insurance listing from MIA. As far as proof of registration, I have none. The last proof of registration was probably back in nineteen seventy-five.
Does it have plates?
It has plates on it, but when you run the plates, the registry comes up blank. So, I would have to assume that there's nothing current. Spoke with the police department.
That's a copy of the car, the registration from nineteen seventy-five.
What would you normally be paying for this? I mean.
We don't, it doesn't, in other words, the town registers a vehicle once, that's it.
Yeah.
So then.
We don't get the renewal notices ever again.
So then this, this is, this would be typical, you registered it once and you've never had to register it again.
Right, but that's, it's not showing in the system at all, so certainly.
The vehicle history isn't showing in the registry system, either under the VIN or the registration number.
Jim, Jim's an insurance agent, so he was able to run it, and it's not showing either under the VIN number or under plate number. So that's one thing that we, even though it's not taken over the road.
What is this muster?
Even though it's not taken over the road, it's, it's put on a flatbed, et cetera.
Yeah. But it's a historic vehicle, so doesn't that?
Well, you can register a vehicle of that age without a title in Massachusetts. It's not unheard of that people have them. It's just a matter of trying to get the vehicle, to set it up in the proper way, so that.
So it's showing up in the computer system.
Could be inspected.
Yeah, to be inspected, et cetera.
So a historic vehicle still has to be inspected?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's not, that's not a big deal, that's something that can take place, but the town owns the vehicle.
Right.
And you have the muster association, which is a non-town entity that's going to use the vehicle. And so they would need permission from the town in order to use that vehicle.
So, what, so she learned today that?
VFIS stands behind musters a hundred percent, they're all for musters, and so they would ensure the manpower, including the female muster team, even though seven of the eight are not firefighters, as long, they would just be added to the policy as an additional insured, be Berlin Fire Company.
That's what we, we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
So if you voted and you bless it, that's done.
Okay.
Okay, so that's.
Well, you need to give permission to use the town property by a private entity, yes?
We have.
Okay, no, excuse me, that's part of it.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
So if you give my blessing on that, on that end of it, I can take care of my end of it, then they have this issue.
Since, since Earl is self-insured, how would, I'm not sure how they would suffice to satisfy a certificate, you know, with the league.
I don't know whether it would have to be.
He needs a piece of paper to go back.
Okay, VFIS will issue it if you give me the name of the league, so if it's Wachusett Fire Muster League, she will whip up the certificate of insurance with that on it ASAP. There's no added charge to the town to get the manpower coverage from VFIS.
VFIS.
If there is a loss, though, it doesn't just apply to the fire department, it applies to the entire town premiums, whether it's a woman member, non-firefighter, or anyone, anyone injured on this would up the VFIS rates for the entire policy.
Oh, yeah, just as anybody, just as any claim under it would, yes.
Now, that's for, that's on the people end.
Correct, this is not the vehicle.
So we have to find out in MIA end of things, on the vehicle end, if something happened with the vehicle or as a result of them using the vehicle or whatever, then the town, there's some liability there that you guys would end up, the town would end up suing.
So we've covered the personal liability, now we need to cover the vehicle liability. Correct.
Right.
That only came up this afternoon, I will call MIA tomorrow and find out some more.
Okay.
Okay.
And see what they're gonna require about this truck, but if you could explain why the truck is being flatbedded there, and why the truck, you have a concern about the safety for the truck, and what the event it's gonna go be far enough?
The truck is a nineteen forty-seven truck, and it's been used. It's, it's served full-time as a frontline piece till nineteen seventy-three. After that, it was used as a reserve brush truck for a couple of years. I don't know the exact number of years, but a few years after that, it was reserved strictly to run in the annual muster.
And is it, I mean, does it?
So it's, it's got, it's got wear and tear on it, it's just an old truck, so for, just for the, the fact of that it'll be able to run, it's an, it's an old six-volt system, so the chances are, when we run it a lot, the battery dies.
So, or can it overheat or whatever, just to buy?
It overheats, and any like little thing with an old vehicle.
You want to get it safely and use it just for the muster and bring it home safely.
So what do you have to do, are there concerns of using it at the muster? That it will, I don't know, blow up?
Well, it sits all year, that's the problem, that's the really bad thing.
Why, why don't you just use another truck?
Unfortunately, the events that are based around the muster don't really pertain to currently built apparatus.
Okay, that's, yeah, because I was thinking.
It's the size of the apparatus of what we, of what we used in nineteen forty-six versus the apparatus that we're building now. They're just two different animals.
Where is the muster this year?
Harvard is hosted.
On public land?
Yes. They shut down, they shut down.
Shut down, so it's a closed roadway, so, you know, it's not open to traffic.
So it still would require the insurance as though it was on a highway?
Well, I would feel better if, if you had proof of insurance behind it, if something happened to the vehicle, jumped the curb, whatever the case may be, fell off the trailer, who knows what, but it's a, a town's liability.
We, we've determined that it's a liability coverage.
Personal liability.
Personal liability coverage, okay. So now you're talking about property insurance, basically, right?
Vehicle.
The vehicle insurance, right.
Yeah, on the property, yeah, the vehicle is.
Yes, yes.
All right. You know, I'm not all that worried about it in the sense that, we don't use this, it's not an essential piece of equipment. If it burns out, it burns out, if it, you know, if, if the other aspects of returns are covered.
Well, it's under our MIA policy, so maybe Mary can just call tomorrow and find out.
If someone were driving it and it were to go off course into the crowd or whatever it is, then is it personally, is it, is it the vehicle, is it the town's liability? You just wanna make sure that that's covered by insurance.
See, on a typical, Tom, on a typical commercial auto policy, there's exclusions for stunting racing in many places on the policy, on a commercial auto policy.
Well, we, what?
So, so what should Mary be asking MIA?
She should be asking if there's any exclusions, restrictions, lowering of limits, any verbiage in there.
Because you're doing it for a five.
But she has said that they know this is about mustering.
No, no, that's the, that's the people's.
Personal liability.
I understand, it was the personal.
We're talking about.
I understand that, but I'm saying, you know, we talk, if you're talking about liability versus property loss, I wanna be sure, we, we talk about one thing and then talk about the other thing. My understanding, and we should confirm this, is that the liability issues are covered pursuant to Mary's, okay? So now.
No, it's accident and sickness, A and S, accident and sickness.
Okay, not liability.
That's not, right, that's correct.
All right, then we need to confirm that.
You'd want coverage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we want them covered as if they were a town employee, on-town business.
Does that get picked up on the VFIS end of things, such as?
I don't know if that's MIA.
We have to square that away.
We do, okay. That's, okay, so that's one piece, all right? I, I have to say, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about sort of pure property casualty loss.
If it died, it's died.
Yeah. Sure. But I agree, we have to cover liability, you know, and accident casualty loss.
Right, right, okay.
If, in fact, all those three things are covered, and if the insurance company recognizes, and is a supporter of firemen's muster and recognize it, then if it specifically talks about that and is included, then I think that answers a great deal of your questions. Again, we have to look at the detailed statement, right?
That's the nature of it.
So that's what, okay, so.
Yeah, the liability part has never been mentioned as being covered by VFIS. They've always talked in terms of accidents, sickness.
So that's the individual that gets injured or?
The female members in particular, that are not members of the fire department.
Well, let's check.
Liability?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the problems on the auto end are that it doesn't have a registration, it hasn't been inspected.
It appears that way.
It appears that way.
Right, it may be, who knows with the registry system, it's in some old, it never made it into the computer system, so we may have to, as Jim said, just to make it boil, we may have to file paper, R M V one and re-register it under the new system or something to make sure they've got it in the system. And then I'll just go get a general safety inspection on it, and that will take care of the product, if you will, the town's vehicle.
And just to be clear, the certificate of insurance that is being asked for from us.
Liability?
Covers what?
It's, they're just looking to cover if, we can actually show you an example copy from, that was submitted to the league.
Just, I mean, as long as you guys are all here.
Yeah, I don't know how.
I just saw these. This was just a basic copy, it was provided to the muster league from the Holden Association.
Okay.
That was got an umbrella on it too, Tom.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So it's backing up, it's umbrella on top of their vehicle insurance.
All right, so this is a, this does cover commercial general liability.
But, but if you look at that, if you look at that underlying policy, it's commerce, on a commercial auto policy. And I'll show you right here where it's excluded in three places.
Where?
This is a.
The activity.
What's that?
The activities excluded.
The activities are excluded, I believe, or there's a good, strong argument that they're excluded. Racing.
Yeah, no, I, that's all right, don't worry. Geez, it wasn't even on fire, you know?
We forgot to tell you, Jim has his background.
This is one place.
I'll give you some paper town.
I understand, and that's why I say, if we get this certificate with a statement that the mustering is, is covered and contemplated, then I, in the cover letter, then I'm comfortable.
All right.
Because this, this certificate covers the general liability.
Right, right.
And again, if they give it to us with a cover letter saying that because we support the mustering and view that as sort of part training and not, you know, racing, you know, that's sort of a stop, then, then I'm reasonably comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
Fill out the league's name right on it, I'll be right back.
There was, unfortunately, there wasn't that much, I was just, I was gonna go out and fill it up again after the appointment was that, so. Anyway.
So we'll take care of that background?
He's gonna get a certificate, you'll see that the certificate does, it does cover general liability and all that, that's.
At the league level?
No, 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 yeah, you, you can go with.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, we'll go over.
You think that covers your?
We need to see what certificate they're giving, but I'll show you, and, and then you can scan it. If you get it in, you can scan it, and I can look at it online.
Okay.
So basically, we wanna see the coverage, whether it covers general liability as well, and we want a statement that indicates that they contemplate covering the muster activity.
And then you'll, then you revisit the question, whether you get permission at that point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have any problem giving you permission, I don't think anybody else does.
No.
Once we get all this.
Conditional permission, or you wanna wait till you get the information, probably?
You're meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that too late for you to be enrolled in, in the muster, huh?
Not at all.
When is it?
Father's Day.
Fifteenth?
Oh, yeah, we got time, so we can, all right, so let's see.
How late can you give them this?
We can tell them that it's in the works, and I can have up until, the next league meeting is until June sixth.
Okay.
So, we've got some time.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
That was easy.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
See you later.
I'm just gonna fill up my cup again. Set it up in the next alley.
Your effect.
Thank you, Tom.
Mary, did you, um, let me see, I called you on a couple of things.
Yeah.
I read through this, oh, the one thing on the, um, De Matthews property, memo, M O U.
Yes, it's in here.
Doug and Steady, it's in here, okay, okay.
Yep.
So that's, all right.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, it is, it's on, yes, okay. And then, um, what else? There were two or three things. Oh, these appointments are, I know all about this. Then the Z B A wanted to have access to our company, that's on there.
Yep.
All right, good.
There's one other phone that I gave you.
All right.
So they lost the call.
There you go. All right.
No, I'll find it.
Well, you guys, it's probably filed in the- What was it, Mary?
The Z B A appointment.
Oh, okay, no, I'll take care- I'll take care of that, as you can discuss it, sure.
This is my-
Okay. Uh, we have an acknowledgement letter here to, um-
Sienna?
Sienna, who is, um, resigning from the, uh-
It's Shona Patistas.
Shona Patistas.
Almost like it has an H in it.
All right, Shona Patistas, very good person. Um, thanking her for her service. Motion to issue that letter.
So move.
Second.
She is, by the way, uh, she was a real asset. She is an engineer. She works for- Yeah, no, I remember.
Yeah, I've seen her.
She's a-
Meetings.
Very, very good. But she'll be on as a, um, she came in the other night and helped us out with something and so she'll be available for that, yeah. So, all in favor of issuing that letter?
Aye.
Aye. And then, uh, we have, uh, an appointment to the Conservation Commission. Carolyn McDonald at one oh eight Gates Con Road. I would move to appoint her. Can I do that since I'm-
Of course you can.
Yeah, 'cause I would so move, um, second?
Second.
Yeah, she, again, she shows up every meeting. She's been showing up. She's very, very interested. She and Louise and Stan are trying to have a Berlin beautification, little subcommittee, do some plant- more plantings around and, you know, she's very smart and very, um, very energetic and very committed. Great, no, and I- I know her from some of the, you know, various mall stuff and everything, so I think certainly she's a strong candidate.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right. Right. Judy, do you have any?
I have no problem.
Okay, then, um, just now the discussion, I'd ask, um, for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just made out to you, so you're gonna have to sign one last one, even though we've rewritten it.
Oh, I did that on purpose, just because, uh, he's on the Conservation Commission with her.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I think I took off clerk though, right?
Yeah, just remember the board. Okay. All right, we have here paperwork for, um, Matthew's purchase. It's twenty-four acres that, uh, if you were leaving the transfer station up Jones Road and cross South Street over the railroad tracks and went around that curve, it's that whole hillside and going back in the woods up there.
Oh, nice.
It goes, it's a big piece, goes all the way from down by Papa Coors, opposite her house, all the way up to opposite where Blinky used to live and, uh-
And then up toward Priest-
Right.
Yeah, through the woods.
And it connects to thirty-something acres that we own, landlocked in there, so it's access to it and, um, it's good wildlife habitat. We're getting up to a hundred thousand, frankly, I- I firmly believe that a common drive would put four or five houses up in there with views, nice views off. So it's a real, real good deal. They're relative to Bill Will and have the same philosophy about land and everything, so I think we're pretty fortunate to be getting it. Okay, so we are required to vote on signing the memorandum of understanding. Is that what we're doing today?
Right, I think I flagged all the places that need to be signed.
Yeah, and it's only the memorandum of understanding we're signing tonight?
At this point, correct.
Okay, and it is, uh-
A five thousand dollar check with the M O U, which signing that will trigger the check.
Yeah, no.
Balance due upon closing.
Okay, and, um, so this is between, um, the seller, the town of Berlin, and Sudbury Valley trustees.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I would take a motion to, um, execute the M O U, which seems to just set out the intention to purchase under those terms and I presume to grant a, uh, Conservation Eastman to Sudbury Valley trustees as well.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right.
I would, uh, so move.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a great acquisition, I think. Oh, yeah, it is. It's a, been out for about twenty years. Bill always said, "Don't worry about it, don't worry about it, nothing's gonna happen." Finally, he came around and the owner agreed and she passed away already, so it's, we didn't get it any too soon. No. But her children are honoring it and they're excellent, excellent people.
Excellent.
There's four originals. I think that's what Skip needed. I think there's four in there, right, Tom? Four originals?
There seem to be four tabs, yes?
Yeah.
And once those are all signed and the Matthews sign it, we get it to June, she cuts the check. And that holds it.
That, yeah, that's how you should do it. That's right.
One more. I kind of expected a little pushback from the inspectors anyway, but, um, 'cause everybody's offended when you first do something, but make it, you know, simple and just start to keep track of things. I don't think anything wrong with that. I wanna look into what some other towns are doing anyway. That thing that I showed you was, I understand that the Bolton Selectment, I mean, the Bolton- That seemed to be, that seemed to be pretty much just, you know, time in, time out, chart, um, chart. It's tricky, you have to sign, there are three things that I have to sign each of them, right?
Yes.
Good for you. And I didn't catch on to that until after the second one, so.
Well, does everybody sign that too?
No.
Oh, just the chair?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Put it all back together.
Right, thank you.
All righty. Nice. Okay. And, uh, we have a letter here to Sylvia-
Marble.
Marble, uh, indicating to whom we have awarded the Maple Marble, uh, scholarship. And to Esbit Valley and to the recipients.
Recipients have already mailed.
Hmm?
This is just to Sylvia and to Asbet, asking Asbet to, um, make the announcements at, um-
Okay.
Their graduation.
They do a, uh-
Okay.
A pre-ceremony?
Yeah, they do a grants award ceremony.
So a motion to issue the letter of thanks, notification to Sylvia Marble and the notification to Asbet.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is at Walter's request, number eleven.
That, um, I was at the Z B A meeting, you know I'm working during that. Keep that Tyler farm intact and working with the owner and stuff to see if we can get a microbrewery and get the fields growing brewery crops and stuff. But anyway, he was, um, into the Z B A and, um, looking to subdivide it into three lots and I don't understand any of this about so he could refinance somehow. You would probably understand what they were talking about. I- I didn't. Anyway, they didn't have enough land for the third lot. They were thirty-five hundred feet short and so then he talked about committing to putting a historic preservation, getting it registered with the National Register on the brick house if they would award him that, um, that variance. But anyway, whether that happens or not, the Z B A wanted to know if they could use town council to review any kind of deed restriction on the house to make sure that it was valid and in perpetuity and-
No, no problem.
No, that's fine, okay. So-
Mary, would you let them know?
That's, so Steve Murphy, yeah? Tell Steve Murphy to contact Copman Page?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Okay, we have here a vote for the, uh, appointment of, um, the police department staff. That includes Thomas Galvin as chief, John Geis as sergeant, Eric Shartner, David Goulding, Richard Gilchrist, and Carl Corvo as patrolman, uh, and then a series of regular police and special police. There are no changes to this?
There is only just dropping, if you look up, turn the pages, one matron that fell off. Then Duncan Baum moves from being a regular patrolman to a special police officer.
Okay.
Those are the only two changes.
All right, so these are reappointments.
Right.
No problem.
Okay, I'd take a motion to approve these.
I will move that we reappoint all- all those people that are on that list, including the two, um, changes in status.
Second.
Okay, no other discussion? There are none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have some minutes we want to approve?
No, we don't. I do want to do none.
No, I- The note said there were one minute, so I just-
Oh, okay.
I just turned the page.
Good.
And, um, Ms.- I'll let Ms. Boomer talk about that, so this is, uh-
This is, um, just to accept the high bidder from Unisie bid for the two thousand five Ford Crown Victoria. The winning bid was one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you wanna make a motion in that effect?
I would make a motion that we accept Alan Curseiden to, as the high bidder for the two thousand five Ford Crown Victoria.
I second it. Any amount of sixteen fifty, right?
Yep.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I think signing just the back of the title, you can be told to come in and cash or cashier's check. Is what you're gonna use the terms?
Yes, yep.
And I just got this from Bruce.
See if it starts.
Right.
I was gonna ask him, that's been sitting there.
One more, one more, one on our own town. Oh, he actually thought he needed to charge the battery and he was going to do that.
All right.
I can remind him.
I think we also need to write the odometer reading in.
He said you advertised it with it.
Yes.
So that, he says that has not changed.
Okay. I've got a picture of it then.
I put the mini script print- printout of the ad when it was still up there in the-
Oh, well then it's in there.
Yeah, I can type it in.
Oh, did you put the date in as appropriate?
You can put today's date in, because you voted it, yeah.
I wanted to, okay. That's fine. All right. Okay. Um.
Henderson.
This is, um, there you go.
Henderson?
Yep. I did not make contact with him this week. I'll put that on my list. I'll be working from home tomorrow. Maybe I'll try to do that. Um, I delivered you guys copies of, um, the- the policy on ambulance calls, which is basically what we had spoken about before and I'd taken some handwritten notes on. So I think we were going to vote that as personnel committee, right?
Um, I think it's more, it's a rescue squad policy, but unless you feel otherwise.
I think it applies to, uh-
Both.
I think it applies to buyer or-
Town employees, it's for everybody, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a rescue squad billing policy.
But it says if an employee suffers an injury, so-
That is work-related.
That's work-related, so that is the personnel. It includes all town employees.
Yeah, no, and- and Danny's initial letter talked about for any town employee-
Okay.
That is injured, well, you know, in the course of work, so it is, I think, all town employees.
Maybe we oughta, yeah, if a town employee, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't look at it, so it's just saying no one injured in line of work on the job-
Yep.
Be billed for transport.
If it, yes.
If it's via the rescue squad.
Right, they may receive a bill.
But if they-
If they're transported by mutual aid or commercial and then they will submit that to the town, they will submit it to the workman's comp carrier and then other transport, you know, during ops hours or from town facilities will be treated as a normal run.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
So, do we need to put this and vote this as the personnel committee? Is that what you're saying?
I was thinking it should be, yeah.
Because we-
That's what we talked about before.
So we'd need to post a- a meeting next week as the personnel committee.
Yeah, we could do that.
Take no action tonight and put it up for second reading tomorrow.
Yeah, and then post that we're having a meeting of the personnel committee for next week. All right, next Tuesday.
Okay, this is, um, this is information, this is information, in fact, the, um, Copman Page do have a training program that combines the ethics, open meeting law and public records law, which sounds like actually a good thing to do at an officers' meeting. I guess I'd be inclined at this point to schedule it for sometime-
September?
In the- in the fall, September at this point, but, uh-
Through the summer will be ethical and more romantic.
Yeah, exactly, or- or we'll just be gone.
We'll be on May eleventh, no meetings, no meetings.
That's even better, um, yeah.
When you have a all boards or- or town-wide meeting, officers' meeting, do you have a typical day that you shoot for or?
It's usually a night.
Yeah, our night.
Yeah.
Yeah, and-
Thursdays?
Yeah, we tend to do Wednesdays and Thursdays, Thursdays, um, tend to do it also, I think, later in the month because you tend to get toward, you know, a lot of boards that meet only once tend to meet toward the beginning of the month. So, yeah, let's do it third- third or fourth week of September, maybe.
Okay.
People will be back from vacation and-
But that sounds, uh-
So, the next one here, which is the job description compensation- So the next one here, which is the job description compensation for electrical inspector, when I tried to open up the compensation spreadsheet, there was nothing in it.
Wow. Okay, meaning.
I, well, I, you.
Oh, all the towns.
You sent the description and you sent a spreadsheet, and when I opened the spreadsheet, I had nothing.
Tom hasn't there yet.
I have it.
Really?
I did see that once though Judy, when I opened it, and I don't know how I fixed it other than closing it and opening it again.
Well, I tried doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, so maybe if I can just make a copy of this and look at it. Cause I was gonna kind of go through and categorize them and.
Okay.
See if I could come up with any type of.
So do you want to do that and report next week?
Sure.
Okay. You want me to leave that out so you can see the copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the.
All I had was the thing at the top. I saw that one, must happen to me too.
All right, now we have the Kinder Morgan.
That's the electrical inspector, Hay.
Right.
For the job description you had.
Oh, yeah.
It's been around for a couple of weeks, that's Judy's version of the electrical inspector job descriptions.
Yeah, I read it, I think it's well done.
Your electrical inspector has not seen it, I don't know that you want feedback from anybody.
I think we should get feedback from, since he does the job.
Either Larry or anybody else.
Don't you think that the person who does the job should look at the?
Yeah.
Sure.
So give us the inspectors for.
Yeah, yep.
Well, let me ask you this, are we going to, we're going to advertise, right? Changing the job, do other people have an opportunity to look at it, maybe other candidates?
It would be publicly put on the website?
Once we approve the job description, it gets put.
Right.
The ad goes out and the job description's with it.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Where does that, I mean, existing, right, means.
I mean, all we're asking is if there's suggestions on how it should be.
Did we forget something, or? Okay. Then shall we move along to the Kinder Morgan, which is the gas pipeline issue?
I did, only on nineteen though, I only sent you that description this afternoon of the land use inspector clerk.
Sorry, what?
That's actually before.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The other job description.
I read it, that was pretty thorough also.
That's the clerks?
And I will circulate, yeah, that's the clerk. And I'll circulate that to the other, so we'll get a bunch of feedback, okay?
Yep, that would be good. Okay. Oh, that's right, yes, I took it out of this spot, and we discussed it earlier, anyway, all right. Now we get to the Kinder Morgan. And Mary, you say they've been in talking about dates, and then I also have a report on the meeting that we had with representatives of Kinder Morgan at Naughton's office.
Oh, you went?
Yes, I did.
I did not know that. No, the only thing is that Rick Charbonne, who is a lead man for their PR team lands, said mistakenly thought that we were pitching dates. The last I ever heard from him is he wanted the day after Naughton's visit, which I said was too short notice unless you're gonna give up local names. And then, so he wants now, he wants you to generate dates. And I don't, I didn't think he wanted to go into the summer per se, cause you'd lose people.
No, I think we wanted to do it in June.
And do it sooner than later, and did you want to do a special night, or do you want to? He only asked me this by email today, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine, well, let me, I mean, let me tell you.
Make sure I wasn't gonna lose anybody for a night that he's gonna be here, or.
Yep. Maybe what I should do is give my report, cause there's a fact in the report that I think is relevant to when we schedule it.
Okay.
Okay? I did, I attended a meeting with representatives of Kinder Morgan at Representative Naughton's office at the State House. The proposed pipeline is meant to address, and this represents notes that I took of the, of the meeting. The proposed pipeline is meant to address established distribution commitments that local gas distributing distributors have made to Kinder Morgan. It ends in Shrewsbury because there's a distribution hub that is provisionally committed to take the gas from the pipeline. The pipeline proposal is for a twelve inch line. This would not provide gas to Berlin residents. Kinder Morgan is in the business of providing to, you know, local distributors, not to distribute locally to, to consumers. Berlin would only receive gas if a local distributor opted to lay local distribution pipes in town. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is the lead regulator, but the policy of FERC is to defer to states in terms of local regulation, environmental protection, eminent domain law, et cetera. A proponent of such pipeline is required to determine a need and to demonstrate that it cannot be served by co-location in an existing easement or existing pipeline.
Wondered about that.
Yep. A proposal to FERC includes a quote unquote identifiable preferred route and alternate routes.
So, but just to go back to that other one, that points out at that meeting we had when you said then they put a second pipeline in along with the first one? So that's because they have to demonstrate it can't be served by a co-location. So once we got this in, then they could, as was pointed out at that meeting.
Then we would be a co-location.
Yes, then we could end up being a co-location.
That's right, that's right.
Joe, would you just read again the one up above where you said the state does have environmental and stuff?
Yep. Yeah, you also, you also have a copy of this if you.
Oh, do I have? Okay, sorry about that.
But no, and I'm happy to read it again. It says the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is the lead regulator, but the policy of FERC is to defer to states in terms of local regulation, eminent domain law, et cetera.
Okay, got it, yep.
Seems to me we need to find out who that local distributor is.
Okay, the current, oh, sorry, that I, where I'd left off, says a proposal has to include an identifiable preferred route and alternate routes. The Berlin route that's being proposed is being proposed as an identifiable preferred route in their submissions to FERC, okay? All right, the current survey process is as follows. A roughly four hundred foot wide corridor is surveyed with attention to environmental, topographical, cultural building features, and so on. Kinder Morgan does not pay for access to survey or compensation that would go to a landowner occurs at the time that an easement is purchased. Kinder Morgan may request that the Commonwealth DPU provide an order for access. The purpose of the survey is to locate a pipeline easement within the survey swath. The easement itself is as follows, there's a permanent easement of thirty to thirty-six feet. No building, grass, crops are allowable, sorry, but no deep rooted plants such as trees. There's an additional twenty-five to fifty foot construction easement, but that's encumbered only during construction. It expires upon the installation, and there are no limits on the use of that construction easement after its expiration, so therefore that could become reforested and, yeah, so on. Federal Department of Transportation policy prohibits the use of interstate corridors for, of gas line easement. And the thirty foot easement makes it difficult, you know, to use existing roads as a, as a location. And then finally, Kinder Morgan said that they'd experience groups of at a minimum of two to three hundred in small towns when they do their project presentations. And so if we're going to have them in June, we may want to perhaps use the gym. That's why, yeah, before we, so I wanted to read that.
Do you care if I post this online in the?
No, not at all, I've actually, because I was reading it because I did it quickly, I have a couple of typos that either I can correct or I can give to Mary and she can correct. And then, yes, I think it's okay to post. It's a report that I've given to the.
I have creative slackens Facebook page too.
All right.
If you'd like, I can put it on that.
It'll direct some traffic.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And I'll give you the one that had, a couple typos.
So asking Principal Campbell availability.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
That'll be the first thing, cause they do a lot of stuff in June.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's why I.
Mid-June, late-June.
School gets out third week of June? So you want to do it before people start to take off for vacations?
Second week?
Well.
Second and third?
I don't have a count.
I think you need to know what the school's doing, because you know that the week before or the week that school ends, they may have things going on.
So a day of the week do you prefer, or?
No.
Think strategically and just.
No, one of the things that they did say was that they tend to get called in a lot because selectmen call them in and selectmen tend to meet on Mondays.
Right.
They said they had tended to get called in a lot on Mondays, but I said we can be flexible in that regard. So I would suggest a Wednesday or Thursday. Is that all right?
Yeah, we're going, let me see, I'll be gone two Thursdays from now, four or five days.
Yeah, yeah, I will be gone the week of the ninth. But I don't necessarily have to be here for this.
Yeah, well, neither do I. It would be interesting to be here.
Well, why don't we have Mary find out available dates for June, and then next week we can decide on a date.
Yeah, and I'm inclined toward probably the week of sixteen through twenty-third, that would do it, coming.
See what they have.
Okay. All right. I'll give you that, so you can make this, oops.
Yep, got it.
Typos, okay.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, and you emailed this to me, so I have this electronically.
Yes, that's what you printed it from.
I said, no, this will get P D F R on, I got it.
No, it's, it's a word.
Will do.
All right.
On number twenty-one, just, you know, I think I've been emailing you to let you know what's been going on with the computer.
Yeah.
And as it sits, they were able to do good work and restore most of a year's worth of sent emails that went missing. There's still like two weeks' worth of sent emails from April that are missing and not recoverable.
Okay.
So I think I've talked to Dan about the idea of doing our own backups here, if not daily, maybe weekly, just to try to safeguard this. But still need IT assistance in restoring it if we ever had that kind of a failure again. He had a couple of different suggestions, but one thing could be that I buy my own external hard drive to do backups to, and then maybe store it in the back room or something. It's just, I don't know how many other people have to do backups, so when the IT coordinator has, the data systems manager has this meeting, we could talk about.
Yeah, I think that's right.
How many different people have to do backups.
I mean, there are services that you can just keep it out in the cloud, and you don't have to do any of this backup stuff.
Not so cheap, but it is possible and.
Yeah, but you know what?
You can run off.
There's a much higher probability that you're gonna do it if you don't have to do it. In terms of backups, people tend to just, you know, oh, well, I'm not to do it today, I'm in a hurry. So.
Also, if you had a building loss, it would still, it would be clouded anyhow.
Yeah.
All right, and there is gonna be a meeting, right?
Well, that's one of the miscellaneous things is that after I sent you that email, the data systems coordinator said that there would be a meeting upcoming. We asked for people's comments, so they could put together an agenda. Kind of deep in there.
Yep.
So.
Okay, it's not, I, I, as chairman, it's not necessarily my custom to go do the miscellaneous correspondence. If there is somebody, if there is something that somebody scanning that list of correspondence has any interest in, I'm happy to.
What is the DHCD looking for building permit data, is that for Northbrook Village?
No, I get, it's for the whole year, all the permits issued last year, and I already had that on his desk, I can help him with that just to get it done. The number of permits issued and ones that were affordable.
The emails you're missing sent to us, Mary.
No, there is.
All over.
Two weeks' worth that I've sent to anybody, two weeks' worth sent are gone. I got only, I probably send thirty a day, so there's two weeks of that gone.
Well, you know, you could get the ones, we could send you back the ones that you sent to us.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
I suppose that's true.
That's probably a pretty good chunk of them, yeah.
Yeah, you think I copied you and everything, but actually, Walt wouldn't say I do.
I think you double copied me.
I could give you the timeframes, and maybe one of you could send them back, cause if when I send it to one, I'm sending it to all.
Yeah.
You know, my sent messages never delete, but my trash barrel empties every day almost, I only have about twenty or less on there, so I can't help you on that.
Oh, send it to me.
Okay, the charter online only stays there for about a month, and then it's gone, but it doesn't matter if I'm sending it out of that, it's not up on the charter cloud anyhow, but it's being sent out of my Microsoft Outlook, and it's, if it's not restorable. It wasn't restorable from a backup.
Okay.
So.
All right, what about the Canon Solutions email for the copier, was this for the scanner part?
No, no, this is to get ready for the idea that OSA printers, like the two that we have that work fine, at some point won't be serviceable. So we're into our fifth year now, we're five years and a couple of months now, and he's just prepping us, because when we had FAC, we were talking about forecasting down the road capital needs. And if not in the next go around, but maybe having that to be kicked for the next go around, unless we have a failure, to get ready for it.
Yeah.
Cause I believe we own those, and what he's saying is that there's a law that requires parts be available for the fifth year of sale, but then after the fifth year of sale, there's no law regulating it. So they usually have two years of surplus parts, which we're in the surplus period now of availability, and then after that, they, Canon probably wouldn't support it in year seven.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm looking here, what's the, so May fifteenth is the email you sent to the rescue chief about bidding to collection agents?
Just updating what you all did last Monday, yep. I haven't heard back, if he needs help putting that out to bid, or just getting three bids. It doesn't need to go central register route, is what you all determined last week, but.
No.
It still needs to have three.
He needs three bids.
Right. Okay.
What's the parking at Linden Street Conservation Land?
That is.
Yeah, that miscellaneous correspondence.
Yeah, there's the woman who owns the land, but has given the town an easement to access Mount Fisca, one of three entrances to Mount Fisca. Walter would know better, off of Linden Street, her daughter's getting married this weekend, and so she's not so much asking for permission, but just letting the town know that the daughter's rehearsal party is Friday night and the wedding's Saturday, it's gonna be parking there.
Yeah, yeah.
The chief knows that, and will make sure it's not partying youth, but it's just people, they have the wedding.
Okay.
And then there is twenty-three, there is something that came in today.
An executive session, okay. Before we go into that, is there any other business that we will do in open session?
Yes, so I think we need to prioritize what we're gonna do this summer, because we have the clerk hiring, we want to hire the clerk as close to July first as we can, right? We need, the police chief contract expires beginning of September, isn't that correct?
I don't think so, but.
No, I thought he was September, maybe you were September.
I didn't think it was in, I didn't, we could check that, but I don't, I don't think it expires September.
He was hired right before me, did you hire him with a one-year contract?
Yeah.
I think he was only here three weeks ahead of me, so it may have been early September, late August.
I didn't think it was a one-year, but okay, we'll.
I thought we did a one-year, and we need to start working on the public safety study. So.
Well, we, that we have to do when we have.
The electrical inspector.
Well, we, July first, we have the money, so we need to come up with a scope of work, we need to know what it is we're gonna put out to bid. And since we're going to every other, well, June, we have three meetings, and that's July first. I didn't write down all the other stuff I was thinking. But anyway, those to me were the top three. So I, I guess Mary can look up the police chief contract and see, I thought it was one year and I thought it was September. So. Do we all want to come up with a scope of study for, scope of work for the public safety, or do we want?
What did we give, when we had the people in to talk to us, we gave them some description of what we were after, right?
Well, we, I, I wrote up something to tell them what kind of information we wanted from them.
Can we recirculate that as a remark?
Sure.
You gave them a description of?
I gave them questions of things I wanted them to come in and tell us. It was an email.
To the chiefs, I thought you did that, to the actual companies?
No, to the chiefs.
To the chiefs, correct, yes, you did, you did.
To the companies.
Yep.
We just had them come in and tell us a little bit about themselves.
All right, let's see what you did with the chiefs and then, um.
That was before the study. That was asking them to kind of report in, you're getting your bearings before you even met with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to jot down some thoughts.
I mean, what I did was look at a lot of the studies that are online. There's a ton of them, and they all have like a scope of work at the beginning of them. So I'll go back and look through those.
Okay.
So maybe we can all have something next week?
I think I marked that for next week.
Yeah. Next week is the twenty-seventh?
Yes, Tuesday, twenty-seventh.
Yeah, probably be difficult for me to get something for next week because I have other.
Commitments?
Commitments. I'm doing the Memorial Day service at the church on Sunday. And I'm trying to actually have a little time off about Memorial Day weekend.
And the first reading and the second reading?
Well, we can, I'll do something. We can use that as a framework then.
Okay.
Mary can. I'll send it to you.
All right.
Look at. That's all I had.
Walter, you have anything?
Yeah, just one thing. I'm not sure where I'll go at this point, but regarding, we make appointments. And let's say you had a situation, we made an appointment and it turned out to be a problem with, um, not going into specific details, where just where the decorum, if you will, or the behavior of that appointment on the board was an embarrassment, to put it mildly. What, do we, um, do we have written policies and procedures? Or we simply call them in for executive session warning? The chairperson of a certain board was talking to me and was very offended by, by the behavior embarrassed.
Okay, so you're talking about an appointee?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you were talking about somebody acting up when they had an appointment with us.
No, no, this is, this is one of.
No, then the chairman says, you know.
Yeah, no, no, this is, this would be one of our.
I would think that if it's a committee that we appoint, that the chairperson should write us a letter.
Yeah, well, that's what I'll, I suggest that, right?
Wait a little longer and if it continues, we'll certainly get a letter then.
Yeah, I think it's good to have a letter. I mean, we generally, on everything else, if somebody has a complaint, we like to have somebody's name on it and, you know, and have somebody take the time to put it in writing.
And hear both sides.
Yeah.
Just procedurally though, if you were gonna go into executive session to discuss it.
Uh, I don't think we could. I mean, it would depend on what we're talking about, but it would likely not be an executive session.
Right, it's not a personality, personal thing. It's a, it'd be a performance thing. Yeah. Behavior, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah, she ended the conversation with if it happens again. It happens again, and then she didn't say anything, so we'll probably hear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's very difficult to know in this executive session, I don't have, knowing, you know, the content we're talking about, so. Okay.
Heads up, that's all.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, then I would move that we go into executive session for the purpose of considering litigation matters involving the town. We will not be returning to open session, so we'll close off the video at this point.
All right, so let's take a poll.
Andrew, aye.
Bummin aye.
Vic could aye.
It seems so clear to me before, but no, not now.
Power?
I know, I was actually looking for power too.